I'd like to encourage everyone here to take advantage of our voter information guides through vote411.org. And there you will find assistance related to where you vote, what will be on your ballot, and even questions answered by as many candidates as we could get who are on your ballot, and information about your ability to get to their websites and contact them directly. So please go to vote411.org frequently as you decide who you're going to vote for. Tonight's forum, as I mentioned, from the Clay, we have two candidates for the Clay County Commission, Paul Grabenhoff and David Ebinger. And then they will each be giving an opening statement for about a minute. We'll be just doing a number of questions as we can get to in the 45 minutes we're allotted. And each of them have a chance to answer those questions, one minute or so apiece. And then there'll be a closing one-minute statement from each of them as well. All of our questions are screened for clarity and for any overlapping questions. And so we try to get to them as many of us as we can. If we can get to all of them, we will. If we cannot, we run out of time. Please feel free to ask them directly yourselves, any questions you might have. Before we go to the opening statements, starting with you, Paul, I will read the statement from Joel Paulson, who could not make it here tonight. "Good evening, everyone. My name is Joel Paulson, and I'm running for the Clay County Commission to be, to bring strong, transparent, and effective leadership to the community. To the community I've called my home my entire life. As someone with over 20 years of experience as a consulting engineer and public servant, I've had the privilege of working on numerous infrastructure projects that are vital to the quality of life we all value: roads, water system, wastewater management, flood control, and more. These experiences have equipped me with the technical expertise and leadership skills necessary to manage large initiatives and budgets responsibly. For the past five years, I served as the Executive Director of the Metro Flood Diversion Authority, which I led one of, where I led one of the largest and most complex flood control projects in the nation, managing a $3.2 billion initiative. Through collaboration with local governments, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and private partners, I ensured that the project stayed on time and on budget. I understand how to navigate public and private partnerships, cut through red tape, and deliver results, qualities I believe are essential for a commissioner. If elected, I will focus on several key priorities. First, I will work to strengthen partnerships between the county and its cities, especially in Morehead, so we can tackle shared challenges more efficiently. This will be critical to as our county continues to grow and change. I'm also committed to maintaining high-quality public services such as roads, law enforcement, and social services while controlling spending to keep taxes low. We must use taxpayer dollars wisely, ensuring that we provide essential services without placing unnecessary burdens on residents. One of the specific initiatives I will pursue is advocating for an income tax exemption that matches North Dakota's rate as part of the current border city legislation. This would make Morehead and other border cities more competitive, encouraging more families and businesses to invest and stay in our community rather than crossing the river. This kind of proactive economic policy will help us grow sustainably while keeping our taxpayers strong. In addition to my professional experience, I've served on the Morehead City Council, where I gained firsthand insight into the importance of local government and the need for responsive leadership. My goal is to bring that same level of commitment, accessibility, and accountability to the Clay County Commission. I believe my background, leadership experience, and deep connection to this community make me the right choice to serve as your next county commissioner. I am passionate about finding practical solutions to the challenges we face and ensuring Clay County remains a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you for your time today, and I look forward to earning your support. Together, we can build a stronger future for Clay County." So now, Paul, you can have your opening statement.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you, Julie, for inviting me here tonight. I certainly do appreciate the invitation. I appreciate everyone that is here. To start with, I'd like to let you know a little more about myself. I'll be running for my second term as Clay County Commissioner in District One, which is an area of Morehead in the southeast part of town, which is approximately 12,500 people. Presently, most of the time is spent as a commissioner dealing with health and human services. And I want to keep building on the programs they have. We'll talk about mental health. It's important to me, along with housing and how we raise the bar and elevate people into housing for the future. I'm a lifelong resident of Clay County, and I've always been a spud and always will be a spud. And I'm happy to be with you tonight, so.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Excuse me. I want to thank the League of Women Voters of the River Valley for sponsoring this tonight and support that we show up and present our position and present our abilities and our talents and answer the questions people have for us. I think that's an important part of our democratic process, and I'm happy to engage in it. I came to Morehead 18, 18 years ago now as police chief. I was hired from Little Rock, Arkansas, where I had worked as Little Rock Police Department Officer for 28 years. Living here with the support I had from the community and the quality of the community we have, it's important that we maintain that. When I retired, my wife, who's here with me tonight, and I had the discussion and decided we were going to stay in Morehead. That decision was made in February, so I think it indicates a commitment on our part. We, we had that discussion, and I knew that serving this community would be the best way I could route my energies. So serving Morehead, serving Morehead for 12 years and Clay County for the last four has been a privilege, and I want another four years to finish some of the important projects that we've started.
Thank you, David. You get the first question. Can the county help with Churches United?
You know, it's, we just had a discussion with Pastor, Pastor Brooks. I'm sorry, I forgot. I've talked to him a couple of times since then. Both Paul and I have just come from another event where we were discussing a lot of issues. Paul can go into this. I don't want to steal his thunder because this is his portfolio, but Social Services has funding, and it could be upwards of $300,000 that can go to churches. But right now, they have got to meet their emergency needs. The pastor told me they have until November 30th to get more money together to keep the doors open. If they can get stable, there are state funds that come through the county where if they meet certain criteria, they can get paid for beds that they're filling with our people who are currently unhoused. And it's important that we support them to the point to where we can give them a chance to start pulling that money in.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Yeah, it's very difficult to see what's happened to organizations that thrived for so long in such a good way. And I, like many of you, probably volunteered there over the years. And we know if they do flows, we're going to have a real issue of where do we find placement for all these people. As far as the county, as Dave mentioned, there are grants that we work with, and certainly some of those come through state aid. But ones that will be coming that may help them down the road will be the Local Homeless and Prevention Aid, which is the next cycle of grants that'll be coming here in this year. And we'll be actually hearing more about that within the month. So, but beyond that, you know, I'll just say, I think we need to hear more from the board. We need more what the strategic plan is for them. We deal with public money, and we ought to make sure, and I'm emphatic, don't take me any wrong on this, but they, they need to have a way to succeed before we can probably put a lot of dollars in, into the program other than what we get through grants and support services.
Thank you. We start with you with this question, Paul. What are your plans to promote economic growth in Clay County, particularly in rural areas? How would you work to attract new businesses and industries, and what role should the county play in job creation?
Yeah. Thank you. You know, I think, first of all, the colony, and I think we do this quite well, we have to be accessible. The roads and bridges need to be in good shape, accessibility to bring, you know, to bring people and into those communities for their own economic development. One of the things we do is we meet quarterly with either EDD, you know, with the cities for economic development. How can we bolster for them, you know, what they need legislatively? I'm very open to bringing their words to St. Paul, our representatives we have a good representation with. And, and if there's, I guess, we need to know what their needs are and support them. I don't know if there's direct dollars that go toward that, but certainly I'm always in favor of TIFs and other financial ways to give incentives to businesses and any of that support I have worked with.
David?
We are, as Paul mentioned, meeting quarterly with the business leaders and the community leaders from our rural cities. The situation we have living in the shadow of North Dakota, and I'm not going to slam, we have many great partnerships where we all prosper, working together as a community. But we have a much less welcoming business environment in Minnesota than North Dakota does. Border cities, and it's easy to make promises that you're going to get border city legislation through and everything's going to be equal. I've been here now 18 years, and I've watched the attempts. Some of them are successful, a lot of them aren't. The metro has a strong presence in, in, in St. Paul, and they are particularly interested in out-of-state problems. But we do need to muster our resources together here and go up and deal with the state in legislative sessions. The chamber has been very good at getting us up there as a community, everybody in Clay County, and we get some traction on that. There's a lot of projects that we're working on. Border cities is one of them. And leveling the playing field between us and North Dakota is critical to get, getting economic success here.
David, you get the bell and the next question.
All right.
"As Clay County continues to grow, how will you balance the need for development and environmental protection? What specific actions would you support to preserve natural resources, reduce pollution, and address climate change locally?"
A lot of that goes into zoning and, and development of properties. We have an aquifer here, and it's a treasure. And we have limits on what can be done over the aquifer. But there are residential and, and light business that can't be developed there. We need to keep that in mind. The environment is covered fairly well, in my opinion, by the laws that Minnesota has put out. Enforcement, that's essential. And where we see a need, we need to speak to it. And we, if we need legislation, we need to, again, go to St. Paul and work on that. Our particular needs right now are clean, potable water for our citizens. The West Central Water District, and Paul can speak to that, is being developed and supported by us and by other counties to get clean water into our rural areas. North Dakota's had rural water for decades. It's worked wonderfully for them. I don't think there's an acceptable level of arsenic, or arsenic, I'm sorry. There's not an acceptable level of either. But the problem we've got is arsenic. And there's, the county is supporting and taking steps to get those issues addressed in our rural parts where county.
Paul?
Thank you. Well, prior to being a commissioner, I was elected by in Clay County for 37 years with solid lottery conservation districts. And not only was here locally, but originally and statewide. In, in those, the work that, well, for the county's piece to begin with, I think, yes, zoning, planning the zone is a piece of it. But when it comes to resource management, I really do look forward to the help and the assistance that the county can give solid water districts, the watershed districts, the programs that they've been empowered through state money aid to cover crops, many other practices, best practices, working on their behalf will protect a lot of the resources. Watersheds, again, that does, has to do with storage of water, mitigation of flooding, those type things, and building a plan that's very dynamic and, and effective throughout the whole county. Dave mentioned real quick, the watershed is a brand-new, the watershed district, bringing the water on the aquifers, breeding a plant up by fly mice right now that has reverse osmosis to bring pipeline to, that eventually comes down from Polk County through Clay County. It will take years to develop, but it's going to be a very good program. Hopefully, we'll get good water into Georgetown and Felton in, in the next decade.
Starting with you, Paul. Roads, bridges, and transportation infrastructure are critical to our community's safety and economy. What are your plans to maintain and improve infrastructure in Clay County? And how would you address rural transportation challenges?
Yes, thank you. You know, I continually applaud our highway department. I mean, they do a phenomenal job. They're very efficient. They're first class. One of the road, issues with our roads, that's hard. Out in the rural area is where the gravel mining, where we have the resources, the amount of trucks that go into North Dakota for their development. And we just got done, we did County Road 26th and had to redo it early because the amount of traffic that went over to build the Amazon plant plus other things. So, and the taxation is on that is way out of, way out of balance. But that being said, again, effective work with our legislature, getting our, our bonding in place, roads and bridges, applying for grants. I, I think we do a very good job, and we'll do the best we can to support easy access and commercial and, and for the foreign people the best we can.
David?
Paul is right. We've got an exceptional highway department. Our county engineers, top-notch. We, we so often talk to other county officials elsewhere, and they're, they dream of having a staff like we've got, seriously. They envy us for the county administrator we've got, and our engineers, another individual that does a great job. They have a five-year plan. It's based on the money the state of Minnesota gives us to maintain roads and the needs of those roads. It can be adjusted. If, as Paul indicated, if a road is in total disrepair, we can move it up and put another project back. But we know what we're doing and when we, what we've got to spend and how we're going to get the job done. I would feel really deceptive to sit here and say that we need to fix what we've got as far as staffing and as far as response to these needs. We do a good job on it. There are things that can be done better or quicker, but a lot of that is, again, going up to St. Paul and working on bonding bills and working on the things we need, working on getting bridges paid for, coming up with the funding. And that is a lobbying component that we need to stay engaged in and maybe get a little more engaged and better at.
We start with you, David. Clay County continues to grow. How will you ensure that all residents, regardless of their background, are represented and have equal access to county services? What steps would you take to promote diversity and inclusion within this county's workforce and leadership?
I think we've got a, a real opportunity that we can, we can take in the need we have for workforce. We have people coming into this community from other countries all over the world, and they just want to have a life. And I think having adequate training, like we have with Morehead Public Schools, the Career Academy, like we have with Minnesota State, having resources like that to get people in, get them trained, and get them on the job is what we can do. The jobs are going to be here in this area. We just need to get the workforce trained and get housing for them. There's a lot of issues in that, and it's easy to say, it's hard to do. We've got to look at childcare. A large chunk of our workforce and some great potential employees can't come to work because it simply doesn't make financial sense for them to pay out for childcare equal to or less, or a little bit more than what they can make in the workplace. That's one issue that I, that the state is starting to address. We need to be part of that. Housing is another issue we need to look at. And again, that's one of those roads I can go down and talk about for three minutes, but housing is one of the issues we need to address for, for a good workforce here.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, I think, first of all, we all embrace the diversity and, and the beautiful mosaic we are developing in, in Morehead. In my work, mainly through social services, the work, this would, and, and it's not that we have, we have to make sure that there's opportunity for all. And, and if that's translation, if that has to do with early education for the next generation coming up, great nonprofits are hard at work throughout your community that I get, have the privilege of seeing in action. And whether it's in areas of education, mental, mental health, there's a lot of people at work and doing successful work. The guidance of, in housing with HRAs, in, and education, and elevating people through places like CAP LP is, is tremendous. The workforce issues are, that comes back to economic development. And, and what could we do in Morehead to build a greater, the needs for those workforce people that are going to be available to do the work. But still, we need education through academies in state to bring those skills at a higher level so that they're in place for the workforce when it appears.
Thank you. Paul, you get this question to start with. Do you believe all human persons are pre- or post-borne have the civil right to life? If no, who does not and why?
I'm not going to give an answer. I want you to know, I pray for the unborn. I pray for the mothers. I pray for all people in this situation. And I'm not going to give you an answer, right or wrong. The whole thing breaks my heart, and that's all I can say. But I understand, I understand both sides. And that's what I'll say.
Thank you, David.
I'm going to concur with Paul, and it's not because I'm ducking the issue. I'm pro-choice. That is my belief. But I respect people who passionately are pro-life. I respect that they have the right to make that decision. The concern I have is when the state and the government can interfere and intervene in personal choices for our citizens, that's a slippery slope. But it is, it, one of the things we managed to do successfully on this commission is we address the needs of our community. We address portfolios that we have. We do the work to give quality of life to people in this community. And one of the things we do to avoid the stalemate that you saw like in the legislature last year, is we stick to what we are charged with doing. And we do it well, and we support each other, and we work as a team. Issues that break your heart, issues that stir your angers and soak your passions, they may be part of governmental decisions that are necessary, but they are not part of the mandate of the Clay County Commission. And we will do the job that people have elected us to do and not let other issues distract us, issues that we have no power in and no control over.
Thank you, David. You start with this question. Housing affordability continues to be an issue for many residents. What strategies would you support to increase access to affordable housing while balancing sustainable development within the county?
We have a whole lot of serious issues around housing, simply as we talked about earlier with people who are totally unhoused. One of the issues that we've got to work with is that state aid and state funding can be brought in and channeled into places where it's necessary. But if we decide that we're going to initiate programs within the county, there's only two ways to pay for them. One is state aid and state funding that we can help direct, and the other is to increase the levy. And we've got people living in our community who are trying to stay in their homes, that are on fixed income and retired or have limited resources. And if we keep raising property taxes, we're not mindful that the property taxes should reflect only the things people need or the things that'll provide them with advantages. And if we start raising the, the levy to meet housing needs, it's going to actually unhouse some of the people who are on the fringe of maintaining their own residence. I'm not marginalizing this. There are things that can be done, routing state funding in here to help people. But the county's not always the answer. Again, lobbying and getting our needs put out front and discussed in St. Paul is the best way we can approach this, and a good social service department and zoning and economics to get, to get the money where it needs to go when we get it from the state.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, having been in housing for 36 years, I guess, you know, first of all, let's start the housing situation itself. This, this, this issue of not enough housing has been going on for 20 years, and the number of new house, the housing units is continually being, going, going down. The one, we did have some, some uplifts in the market, no question about it, when interest rates really dropped, down to 2%, 3% in that area. And that revitalized a lot of new home building and existing revitalization. That's all gone for now, and we had a big bump. And so for many of us, we're staying in our homes because we can't afford to get new loans. So we're, we call it being locked in, and it's really slowing down that new growth. On the other area where, that Dave mentioned, the housing sports that come through the state, much of that is on, on state aid, and it's per-population and that type thing. Federal grants that come through HRA, same thing, it has to a population and, and potential workforce. So there are formulas that bring it to us. So what do we do with those funds? And I think those priority, priorities are, how can we leverage businesses to take advantage of federal or state programs that do private, private, public-private buildings of affordable apartments and those type things. And then the other would be just sustainable services that go to homeowners to make sure they can stay in their places or rent supports so they can stay in their houses or in their apartments, excuse me.
Thank you. Paul, you start with this one. Access to mental health services and social support is critical for the well-being of our community. What role do you believe the county should play in expanding these services, and how would you advocate for improved access to mental health care?
Well, I, I do think social services is our biggest department, and it is expanding. Can we do more? Absolutely. But a lot of that, again, depends on state aid. But more and more every year entirely county-level, and it is also supporting a lot of this, this growth. Meeting the mental health needs, we call it the continuum of health. And it starts with prevention. There's good talk going in town, nonprofits coming together and and how they can bring their services to be easier accessed and more knowledge toward it. Um, one of the things we're working in Clay County right now, I'm very excited about that if we get through and my next term, maybe we'll even add complete. We're even going to the very highest security areas and we're hoping to be one of the few and some of the things going into it be the first estate for high security for a psychiatric residential treatment center. And you'll be hearing more about it, more, I really do believe, uh, over the month or so. We're starting to work with Department of Human Services. We've had, we talked to them about our new facility transition and then the fact of increasing our transitional help for people rolling back into the community that have been in, in the juvenile system or the, um, let's put it, the court system and a way for them to get back, back into society and, and helped them with that transition to keep their resism down.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, what he said, um, we, as, as a commission, we're excited about the potential of building this, this juvenile residential psychiatric facility. We've got 18 counties, I believe it's 18 counties and four native nations that have signed on with us last year trying to get $20 million in to transition our West Central Regional Juvenile Center to provide additional housing for the kids that are going into a transitional phase, who have been in the system, who need to get life skills and have a program that would be suitable for them. We would also take some of the space freed up in West Central. And they've already had it inspected. It's an exciting time for us. We think we're going to be able to get a residential psychiatric facility for juveniles built right here in Morehead to meet the needs of the region. That being said, one of the things we desperately need, we have, we do not have a hospital. We've got clinics, but we need mental health, emergent mental health care and stabilization in this region. We have a detox center, a brand new one that looks great. And we're hoping that maybe at some point we can add a psychiatric component to that for people who are dual diagnosed with addiction, alcohol, abuse, and mental health issues to where you can get somebody in there, get them stabilized, get them back on their meds, get them, get them to where you can put them back in the community and they can take the outpatient services that can be set up for them there.
Thank you, David. We start with you. Public safety is a priority for many residents. How do you plan to work with local law enforcement and emergency services to ensure that Clay County remains safe for all its residents? And what is your stance on community policing initiatives?
One minute, huh?
We're being very generous, as you can tell.
I was, I was a police officer for 40 years. Most of that was as a commander or chief. Community policing is a misnomer. It's something we started 35 years ago and it worked, but then it didn't. We found out at the broken windows theory, if you go into a community that's got a lot of problems and you deal with the environmental issues, the kids on the corners selling dope, vacancy, loitering, prostitution on the street, all that kind of thing, that it stabilizes the community. The people loved it. They were happy. Everybody was a winner. We kept doing it to the point to where we were oppressive. And it quit work. People lost faith. We have a problem now and it wasn't earned. It's just a happenstance. There are people in every profession that you have to live past. And what happened in Minneapolis four years ago now is something that the professionals were disgusted with, that most, most cops I know were ashamed of. And it does need to be addressed and remedied. But what has happened is the career of law enforcement has been vilified. We need to turn that around so that people want to work as, as law enforcement officers. They want to serve their community. We need to be receptive to the concerns that community, everybody in that community. It's not going to be an easy task, but I'll tell you, in Morehead, Minnesota, and in Clay County, it's a lot easier than it is most of the world. And we can do that. There needs to be financial support and incentives to get people hired and to keep them. And there needs to be standards and rules that are enforced to keep them the kind of officers that this community deserves.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, uh, public safety is not my expertise. However, um, as a citizen, I think it starts with as a community that I love by, I live by the rule, love your neighbor. And I hope our community does, and I think they do a good job. So I think community, worship your neighbor with, um, oh, sorry, butterfly, uh, worship with all people and, and knowing your neighbors, I think is so important. As far as the county's concerned, I applaud the work that our sheriff's department does. In my view, they're top notch. I've never seen anything, whether it's in corrections, in, in the jails, in the courts, or the work that the deputies out in the field do that has been anything less than top professional standards. And I trust the work they do, Sheriff, Sheriff, um, ending thing, yapping there. I mean, it's just a classic sheriff. And I, I just trust the work they do. I think one of the problems in City of Morehead that I understand, and I know I have deep knowledge about it, but I know they're 10 officers short, which is unfortunate because that becomes very, very difficult on the ones that are out on the beat. And I know they're overworked, they're tired, and I know it's very difficult for them to have a healthy culture within when you're that short on staff. The stress is then extremely high. But, you know, I think, I, I view, in my view, I think we do a very good job in this community.
Thank you, Paul. We're going to start with you and I'm combining a couple of questions because we're starting to run a bit low on time and trying to try to get as much in as I can. So Clay County has many services to fund from public safety to infrastructure. How will you prioritize, prioritize spending and what steps would you take to ensure fiscal responsibility? Would this include support of the current property tax structure or should there be changes?
Well, the reason we have property taxes and why they've been around so long and why they continue to be in always, well, I can't say always, but most likely they're going to be. It's the most stable tax that we have. And it's all, land is always going to be here. And, and so it's stable. That's why it's used a lot. And if we were doing income tax or just sales tax, there's a lot of variations. That's why the state relies on property tax. The best we can do is as is be efficient with, and as we can with our workforce, making sure that we have good services and, and try to get leverage state and federal aid to minimize the cost on the, to the taxpayer locally for the services that we provide. Um, and I lost my thought.
Okay.
Apologize.
David?
It's been a long night. We need, I, I think I got this from a fellow commissioner who pounds this into our head during budgeting. And he pounced it into the head of our department directors and our, our administrator. Property taxes are a regressive tax. Property taxes are also a necessary source of funding to give our community what they need. We have done a good job and we just, last Friday, had a regional meeting and we were among the lowest in the property level, the 11 counties that were there. We do a good job of holding our staff to limiting their requests to things that are needed or things where we can show a definite advantage to public. There's no fluffy programs. There's no spending things for, for fun. We're, a county, a commission is not a very fun bunch of people. We've got to be pragmatic. When we bump the levy up, it goes into people's pockets and we've got to constantly be aware that that is, some of those people are not going to be able to afford it. And it may be the tipping point. So we really work at keeping the levy stable and thus keeping property taxes a legitimate source of revenue.
Thank you. David, access to reliable internet has become increasingly important for education, business, and healthcare. How will you work to expand broadband access in underserved or rural areas of Clay County? And what role should the county play in bridging the digital divide?
I would love to get one of my colleagues who's out there, who is a fierce advocate for the rural districts, uh, to fill this in. But I want to assure people of something. There are state programs and measures being made to get internet in every corner of this county. And it's not in my portfolio, but the rural, the commissioners with rural portfolios have been striding in their efforts to get this done and supportive of it. And we are involved with the programs to get this done. It should be done like the Tennessee Valley programs were in the 30s. This is something that is basically like electricity. It's something that people need to have any level of quality of life. And to make sure that, that, that proper internet access is out there. Right now, we learned during COVID that kids couldn't accomplish the at-home schooling because too many of them would get on the computer at the same time and it would shut down on them. So this is something that the county is engaged in. I'm not directly engaged in it, but I know it's one of our priorities.
Thank you, Paul.
That leaves Paul room to maybe fill in where I can't.
Not too much, but we do, I'll go with Dave on this one. We do strongly support the carriers and their work. We help them, letters of support to come and will advocate for them down in St. Paul. The state did throw out a bunch of money for, you know, broadband throughout the state. So I think it's a matter, in my mind, it's actually a solution right now just to get it on, laid out. But it is amazing that you know, a little bit south of town, 10 miles, and there's a problem where we sit here within the cities and, you know, have a rapid speed all the time. So it'll just take a little time.
Thank you. That's all the time we have for questions. We're going to move to closing statements. And I once again want to thank everyone who has attended tonight. Your, your interest in your local government is very, well, unfortunately rarer than it should be. And we're glad you're all here. Thank all of you who are watching through our friends at Morehead Access Television streaming live or at a later date, and including through the League of Women Voters Red River Valley social media. Thanks again to the Morehead Library. And Paul, you get the last, the, the opening, closing statement.
Oh, well, thanks again for having me. All I can say is I'm fortunate to have no one running against me. And I can't tell you how excited I am to have another four years to continue the work that we're doing and, and just to learn more about my community, the needs, and try to execute the best I can in my role with the commission. I work on roughly 20 different committees. So there's a lot to gather in. And, and I just left for the next four years and I just say, thank you.
David?
You know, I did the pro forma, thank you to the League of Women Voters that started this. I want to really say how much I appreciate it. The questions, the opportunity to express what we are doing and put into perspective to the public has been a great opportunity night. We just came from a chamber event. They call it a Cracker Barrel. It's like speed dating. And one of our colleagues who will go nameless was one of the people that was questioning us at tables. But it, it just reminds me that we have so much that we do on county commission. You know, a lot of people say, why is it that you've got so many farmers or people have their own business or old retired guys? It's because it's a four day a week, sometimes 12 hour days, sometimes three hour days, but it's something you've got to constantly engage in. And it is, it covers a broad swath of what's important to people. I've done four years, I won't even count the years in, in, as a peace officer, I've done four years on commission and I've loved it. And I've worked hard. And I think I've accomplished a lot. And it wasn't me. It was that staff we've got and it's the other colleagues of mine showing me how to do it and listening to me when I got an idea. And I want another four years and it's not out of vanity or boredom or anything else. It's that this is a beautiful job where you can make a difference for people if you show up and do the job. And I think I've shown that I can do that.
Thank you. And as we finish tonight, I always like to finish with thanking the candidates for being candidates. Our democracy relies upon people who are willing to give their time and effort to fill the positions such as you're running for. And we thank you very much. We'll take a little time to set up for the school board and then we'll continue.
Good job.
Good job.
Welcome everyone to this forum. We are the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley. And this is the Morehead School Board Forum. There are four seats open. We have seven candidates. Five are joining us here tonight. And this forum is being recorded for playback and we are live with the City of Morehead Access Television. And once they do a little bit of editing, this will be posted to our website and Facebook and YouTube page as well. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We work to increase understanding of major public policy issues, inform voters, and encourage active participation in government. We focus on education and advocacy. If you'd like to learn about us as an organization, you can find out about us on our website and Facebook page. Thanks to Morehead Public Library for letting us use this space. It's so convenient. Um, thank you to our volunteers, mostly over here. Well, they're scattered actually. Um, we'd really like to point your attention to the Vote 411 Voter Guide. That's vote411.org. It's a super handy tool. It's got information about candidates, even for the really small local races that we can't usually find information about in other places. You can check your registration. You can get registered if you need to do that. And you can actually, if you go through and if you select your preferred candidates and ballot measure answers, you can actually print it out at the end and bring it with you to the polls to help you remember, oh yeah, I was gonna vote this way. I personally forget names as soon as I leave the computer. So that's very helpful for me personally. Vote411.org. Before we begin, I will quickly review the rules and procedures. So questions have been submitted in advance online and then some folks have filled out some cards. If you think of a question while you're listening to the candidates here, you can go ahead and grab a card, write it down. And if you just hold it up, a volunteer will come grab it for you and bring it up here. And we do our best to ask all of the questions that get sent up here. We do moderate and combine them. So if there's a similar question, we might just ask one of the questions or combine them in whatever way makes sense. Well, let's see here. So all candidates will be given an opportunity to give an opening statement. Then they will each have a minute to answer these questions. And then at the end of that question answer session, we will give them each a minute for closing remarks. Timer will keep track of time and let them know as they Timer will keep track of time and let them know as they, as they get towards the end of their time. And a bell will ring after the time is up. A reminder, you may finish your sentence or your thought, but please do wrap up when you hear that bell. We appreciate your cooperation in keeping the lobby area here quiet so that we can hear the answers that our candidates are giving. So let's begin. We will start with Marissa. And go ahead and give us your opening statement.
All right. Thank you. Well, I wanted to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum here tonight and giving us all the opportunity to share with you all and answer these questions. As she said, my name is Marissa Allering. I live in Morehead here with my husband and two daughters who both attend the Morehead Area Public Schools. I have my doctorate in biology and I'm the Director of Science at a conservation nonprofit in the region. And I'm motivated to run for school board by my passion and love of learning. And basically, my desire to have all of our students receive a quality education that sets them up well for success in life. As a school board member, I would be actively listening to parents and teachers to figure out what's working well, what needs to be improved. I would focus on making it a supportive place for teachers because I think attracting and retaining good teachers is vital to the success for our students and therefore also our community. And finally, I'd be committed to furthering the district's steps at integrating diversity and equity inclusion in all aspects of our school operations.
Thank you. Assad?
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Assad Barori. I was born and raised in Kurdistan. I came to Sweden as a refugee by early 90s. And by late 90s, I came to the US as an international student. And I earned a bachelor and a master's degree in sociology and a doctoral degree in emergency management from NDSU. While I was working on my bachelor and my master's degrees, I volunteered 10,000 hours to the Farquhar Morehead community. Before completing my studies, I had the honor and the privilege of becoming a US citizen. And in 2010, I moved from Farquhar to Morehead. And I have lived in Morehead since. In 2010, I started, I started working and I still work at the Rural Minnesota Seab Office since 2014. I have a great passion for education. And this is why I am interested in serving on the board, hopefully to if elected. And I am married. I have a daughter who is a sophomore at high school.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thank you for the opportunity to answer the questions and go through the forum. I appreciate that, letting people know who I am. My name is Melissa Bergard, and I am a long-term resident of Morehead. My husband, Rick Foster, and I grew up in Morehead, went to grade school, high school, graduated from Morehead High School. Interesting fact, my, my father-in-law actually served on the Morehead School Board years, years ago when he owned Foster's Pharmacy in Morehead. I, I'm on my eighth year of serving on the Morehead School Board. And that's my second term. And I've appreciated the ability to serve and am looking to serve another term on the school board to see through some projects that have been started while I've been on the board. And I don't, I don't have an agenda for running aside from seeing through some things that we've started while I'm on the board and being supportive to our students, families, and our community. So thank you. And I'm looking forward to hopefully serving another term.
Thank you. Matt?
I'm Matt Valen, Melissa's father-in-law. Melissa's father-in-law signed my diploma and handed it to me in high school back in 1972. I'm a graduate of Morehead High School, Concordia College, and Luther Theological Seminary. Along with serving our community's youth and families in ministry for 40 years, I have been honored to serve on the Morehead School Board for the past 12 years. I'm proud of the work that we've accomplished, specifically to help make our student, our district, safe for students and staff. I think that's a, it's a number one priority in so many ways. Morehead is a strong, diverse district. And I'm proud of our learners, our teachers, our support staff, and our administrators. My fellow board members are committed, and I know these candidates are committed, to maintaining and improving what we believe is an excellent and progressive array of schools and community programs. Kathy's my wife of 48 years. We live in a rural home south of Morehead on farmland we own and tend. The farm's been on our family since 1903. My grandfather was on the Rusted School Board, a predecessor to here. Three adult children, all Morehead High graduates. Three of our grandchildren are currently enrolled in Morehead Public Schools. Was honored to shake our oldest grandson's hand and give Bridger his high school diploma at Morehead High School gym last May. And I'm honored to be here with this esteemed group of candidates.
Thank you. Ann Cassidy?
Hi. First, I want to echo and say thank you for hosting tonight. It's an honor to be here. And I appreciate the opportunity to answer questions and help you get to know me just a little bit better. My name is Cassidy Bjorkland. I am running for reelection. I've served two terms. So currently finishing up my eighth year on the school board. I currently work at Concordia full-time. And I believe in the power of lifelong learning, whether it's in the classroom or hands-on experience. That is something that we are giving the district. And I am proud to support the community and our students as they thrive to be better people, better students, and give them all an equal opportunity at education.
Thank you. And we did invite all candidates. We have one candidate, Mark Rice, was unable to attend. He really did want to, but he did have some other commitments that just he had to get to. So he just wanted to let us know that he did want to be here. And he's sorry that he was unable to make it. With that, we will jump into the question portion. So we'll start with Assad. And this member would like to know, what is the best place for public to find information on the budget?
I think the board would, I have never served on the board, but I think the board should provide that information. And this is a public record. So the, the public have a right to know about that information, to have access to that information. And especially parents, they have a right to have that information. So it should be available by the board.
Thank you. Melissa?
I would, I would recommend, if wanting to learn more about the budget, there are different time points during the, the year that the budget's discussed at the school board meeting. And it's a very good learning opportunity if someone's not familiar with the budget. They go through line items. Some of the board members ask questions. And the information that's provided is in the board packet. And I think that's a really good time for anybody who is not familiar with the budget to, to look at it. I think if you try to look at it without attending a meeting and being able to understand the questions that are asked, it would be kind of challenging because it is very complicated. But I would suggest looking at the information from one of the board meetings to understand it.
Thank you. Matt?
Complicated and huge, $116 million budget. 70% comes from the state, 10% from local levies, and 13% from the federal government. Let me say for a moment that 70% that comes from the state has been woefully inadequate these past few years. They've not kept up for inflation. And it has put us in a real difficult position to have to come to the voters for, for a levy. So I would echo Melissa. I think our board meetings are open. We openly discuss these issues. But it is, it is very complicated. Also, our administrators and our leaders of the departments are open to take calls and visit about those issues.
Cassidy?
So I echo Melissa and Matt's remarks. Another place to go if you're wanting the board budget or the budget for the district is you can call the Secretary of the Superintendent at any time. She is happy to get that to you and pass that information along. But a really great place also is to go online and look at our minutes. Start with that and then ask us questions and then reach out to our administrators.
Marissa?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of access to the budget, all of the things that have just been mentioned are important. I also think, you know, when things like levies hit the ballot, it's really great to have even more communication and transparency from, from the district around like, how are, how have things been spent? You know, how are things looking? What are the projections? And I know some of that's, that's come out. But the more transparency, I believe, we can have around communication and the budget and making it easy to understand because it is a difficult thing to look at, the better for all the community and improving that trust between the community and the district.
Thank you. This next question will start with Melissa. There is capital projects levy on the ballot. And we have some folks wondering, what are the consequences if this does not pass?
Well, I think if you've attended one of the, one of the public meetings that's been held in terms of, of why this is on the ballot and what's happening in the district and across our communities and our nation, it's, it's definitely going to have to be looking at some cuts if the, if this does not pass, given the expenses that, that are incurred, the high cost of everything, including buses, fuel, electronics, computers, things are just becoming more and more expensive. And we're going to require that. Otherwise, there is going to have to be some places that there is going to have to be cuts looked at. So.
Thank you. Matt?
Again, because of the legislatures and the, the governor and, and the Department of Education's priorities, we've been left, I believe, woefully inadequate because of some of those decisions. And if we, if we pass the bond, we will only, the levy, we will only need to cut $4 million. However, if it does not pass, we'll have to cut eight. And I don't think any of us are enthusiastic about those cuts because we have amazing staff at all levels. We have 1,700 staff members. And each of them are doing admirable jobs. And, and, and many of them are doing more, more work than, than, than probably other people do in other districts. So it will be very difficult, but we will, we will depend on citizen task force. We'll be depending on the committee. We will, we will have huge citizen input before any cuts are made. But please, please carefully consider voting for the levy so we don't have to make as many cuts as we will otherwise.
Thank you. Cassidy?
To be frank, if that levy doesn't pass, programming will be lost for our students. And that is detrimental to them. They need the extra funding, funding to continue with technology and with our buses. And it is detrimental to students. So it's, it is important that it passes. And I think that it's going to be a rough go for anybody on the board, no matter either outcome. So.
Thank you. Marissa?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's been true that Morehead has passed bonding, things for buildings. But it's been true for a little while. I think that, you know, Morehead is actually operating at a much lower operating levy than many other similar school districts. And that's been true for a number of years. So I do think this capital projects levy is important. If it does not pass, I think all of the issues that everyone else has, has discussed will be a challenge. And thinking about like, okay, what's the next step? Do we try, you know, an operating levy down the road? Because those funds are desperately needed to fund the operating expenses of our district.
Assad?
Well, I hope it's going to be passed. We need more teachers, not less. We already need more teachers, more resources. That would be a disaster if it's not passed. But before, if it's not passed, before any cuts, we should look for any other possibilities, any grants, any state resources that could fill the gap. And we don't need to, to do any cuts. Because like I said, we are hoping to get more teachers, to give more resources to teachers, especially general, special aid teachers. They need more resources. What we have already now, it's not enough. So if we do any cuts, that would be a disasters, a disaster to our educational system.
Thank you. This question will start with Matt. The, a lot of parents were wondering how this levy would affect the, the employees that have more student contact. So they're, so teachers, people that actually interact with the, the students day to day.
So of the teachers, we currently have 404 of master's degrees, 190 have bachelor's degrees. We have a really highly educated and experienced force. And so, one, we're very appreciative of that. But those teachers, they need technical help in today's world. It's very different than the blackboard and the chalk. So we have 9,264 portable computer devices, 623 projectors, 1,000 security cameras to keep the kids safe and the staff safe, 171 printers, 53 copiers, 583 flat panel displays. And we today were at Dodds Elementary, which is really a neighborhood school. And they said very few kids ride their bikes, very few kids walk. So we need buses to bring those kids there. Buses cost well over $100,000. We have high tech in those, in those buses to know where to pick those kids up. So we don't miss them. We also have cameras there. So to help with the, some of the degree, the, the discipline issues that we have. So there are all kinds of support systems that, that help these teachers that are on the ground. And, and that's one of the things the levy will do, is help them do their job better.
Thank you. Cassidy?
Can you repeat the question, one more time, please?
Absolutely. We have a lot of parents that are wondering how the levy will impact the, the staff and the teachers that have a lot of student contact.
Yeah. So that will, the student contact will be enhanced because the teachers will be able to use the technology that's provided. We'll be able to continue to provide extra help, such as liaisons that will be paid out of that money that go to our different students. So they will continue to have the, they'll continue to have the same program, I mean, that's available at this time.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Marissa?
That's, that's very common, as you can imagine. Yeah. So in addition to, you know, as, as Cassidy said and, and Matt said, you know, increased technology through this capital projects levy and curriculum issues, like increased curriculum, availability of curriculum. It's, it may be a little confusing because this is called capital projects levy. And so it's, you may wonder like, how is that going to affect the operating? As I understand it, you know, while this district spends a lot of money on capital projects. And so while this will increase those funds, the, some of the funds the district currently spends on capital projects can be alleviated and then spent on operating expenses to really assist some of those teachers and more of those other operating type expenses as opposed to just the capital projects expenses. So it can cause some budget relief in those categories, too.
Assad?
Yes, this would impact the, the whole school system, obviously. And technology, to keep up with the technology costs a lot of money. And this would help the teacher and the educational system in general to provide the resources they need to keep up with the technology and provide the resources that help teachers to do a better job educating our kids.
Now, Melissa?
And so in looking at the direct impact on the, on the teachers that have contact with the students, I mean, if you think of all the things that the, the technology is helping them do so that they don't have to manually track who's on the bus, who's coming into the class, how many behaviors happened on these days, all of this is tracked by technology. And so by having technology available and continue to support the technology and new devices, because you can't just use old ones. They don't work anymore after a certain point in time. The teacher's time and those that have contact with the students would be freed up to be able to further assist students, work with students, teachers getting their lessons plans ready, not having to deal with those types of tracking things that all of this technology helps with. I mean, I just think it will be very helpful for, for everybody involved and those having contact with students specifically.
Thank you. Cassidy, we will start with you. We have a couple of questions, so I'm going to combine them. But there's some folks wanting to know about, so they're supposed to be a minimum of 17% on assigned fund balance. And obviously that we've dropped below that. And they would like to know kind of what, why was the, why was this path, or why was the budget passed with that? And then who should be held accountable for deficit spending?
So the, for years, the board ran at a very high budget. I think when I started, we were at about 20%. And it was, it ran pretty high. We actually were audited and was told that we had to spend down for quite a few years. And then COVID happened. COVID increased the prices of all of our supplies. We were in the middle of a build project. It increased our building supplies. It, I want to say it doubled our prices. And so that had made the budget. We had to dip below because we had to pay for our supplies to get the buildings to go through. There was a lot of moving parts when COVID hit. We had, there was a lot of extra that we had to pay for. And so that's what had the budget dip down. Yeah.
Thank you. Marissa?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, I guess I don't, not having been on the board in the past, have all that history. But I will say, you know, in terms of who, who is held accountable, honestly, everyone will end up paying the price when, when these things start to happen. And if the levy does not pass and cuts have to be made or we can't find funds. And so it's just going to be really important to think about going future, thinking about transparency in the budget, thinking about projections and demographics and thinking long-term enough with number of students. And, and you know, there's always things you're not going to anticipate like, like COVID. But if you can create a balanced budget situation with some cushion and get back to a situation where we're in place of that balanced budget, then hopefully that would create some cushion for unrise situations when they arise.
Thank you. Azad?
Like Marissa said, I don't have the experience being on the board. I don't, don't know how it works, the mechanism. But regardless who is, whose mistake is, the whole community pay that price. So, but the, the system, it should work in a way that they, they have to manage those resources in a way that if something happens, still they can manage the situation. Obviously, we don't know when, what happens, but we should expect, it's not act of God, it's not, we still have to calculate our budget and how to manage it when there is something unexpectedly happening. Still, we should be able to operate with that budget.
Thank you. Melissa?
So trust me, having a lower balance in our, a fund balance is, is not comfortable. I can tell you that none of the school board members are, are happy with the lower fund balance. That's determined, what we would like to have in there is determined by a policy, which we were able to temporarily set aside due to the costs of COVID, due to COVID and all the increasing costs. However, that is, that is the cushion. And so we want it there. It's not saying that the rest of the ballot, budget is not balanced. That, that wouldn't make sense to me, but it is saying that we have a lesser of a cushion. And so collectively, that's been put through and accepted for the budget. But having, being able to build this back up, being able to pass, you know, pass this referendum and to be able to kind of get a grip back on after these COVID cost inflations and everything that's happened. I think that we could be on our way to build it back up. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that everybody on the board and that administration would agree with me and the community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
We had building projects in progress. And you tried to buy two by fours. You maybe tried to remodel your homes. You've bought groceries. It just went wild and crazy. We had to put diesel in our buses. We had to buy new buses. If you bought a new car lately. Really, at that point, the only place we could have cut was staff. We have 1,700 staff members and we gave them all solid cost of living raises. We were committed to that. And I for one, won't apologize for that. Our custodians each deal with 35,000 square feet to clean. I, I wear myself out with about 2,000 square feet. So it was, it was just a terrible time in history and we can see it from the federal government on down. And I will say unfunded mandates from the state and from the federal government have not helped. And if you know what that is, that means that they come and they say you have to do it, they pay for it for a year or two, and then you're still required to do it and you pay for it.
Marissa, we will start with you. Are you willing to change the policy for public input so that a citizen can come to a meeting, sign a form and speak then rather than signing up ahead of time?
I will say I am very much in favor of increasing transparency and communication between the community and, and the board and the administration. Because I think that's how we, just like in forums like this and being able to respond to questions and having dialogue, that's how we understand what's going on and understand what issues people are facing so that we can, so that a board could address whatever those issues may be. So yes, I, that sounds like it would be a beneficial way to increase dialogue.
Thank you. Azad?
Yes, I would be supportive for more transparency. And I think that would be a great way to communicate with parents, the public, and they have right to know. It would be a great participation in the discussion and which would lead to decision-making process.
Thank you. Melissa?
I love when individuals would like to come and speak to the board. But at, just the same as the board members, it requires some kind of planning on, on an individual's part if they're going to come to a public meeting and speak and have very important things to say or ask. So I, I would not change that. And I am happy with how it is with somebody having the time to be able to think about what they're going to ask when they come into the board meeting and sign the form so that we know they're coming ahead of time. So I'm sorry, but no, I would not, I would not change it. I would keep it the way it is.
Thank you. Matt?
When I sat at this table 12 years ago, I think I probably had similar, similar feelings. But then once that my number and my email was posted and I realized that I had to wade through and respond to countless emails and, and phone contacts each day, and of course running into people at the grocery store and other places, I realized that people, people have plenty of opportunity to get to us. And certainly, it just is a matter of a phone call to the district superintendent's secretary, office assistant, and, and, and they can, they can speak, no questions asked. So no, I, I wouldn't change the policy because I've, I've been at, I've been at church board meetings that have lasted into the next day.
And Cassidy?
I'm so sorry. The name written, oh my gosh, Cassidy.
I am, I agree with Matt and Melissa. I would not change that policy either. We are approached daily by people in the community that have thoughts and we are all very transparent. And if we don't know the answers, we will find them. We will schedule a meeting with any of our administrators that need talking to. We will sit down with them. The access is very, everybody is very available. The information is as transparent as possible. All information can be requested. And people, it's, it just keeps order if we know who's going to be there and who's not going to be there. So no, I would not change that policy at this time.
Thank you. Azad, we'll start with you. What is your stance on parents' rights regarding their minor child, minor child's healthcare decisions?
I'm not exactly sure what you mean with that.
So I think what this is getting to is some schools don't allow for certain nicknames to be used sometimes, especially if someone is trying to try out a different gender. So I think that what the question is getting at is what is your stance on parents having control over things like that?
Obviously, children are minor and parents may help them to make that decision. With that, there should be more communication between parents and the board and this issue should, it's a complicated one. It's not something that black and white and you just determine this or that way. I think there should be more communication with whoever is the guard of that or the parents of that minor.
Thank you. Melissa?
I think when I did my introduction, I failed to mention that I have my master's in social work. And this is, it's a very complex area and it's not a black and white, black and white question. However, you have to make the best decisions based on, on what you know. I, as a parent, would want information about my child at school. My household is maybe a lot different than some of the other households that these kids grow up in. But if I have to say what I, what I think as a parent, I would say, yes, I would want to be able to be informed of this information as a parent. But I have to also say that there's some, that, that could be some consequences for children that grow up in a household that's different than what my kids grow up in. So that's it.
Thanks. Matt?
Parenting is a sacred honor, sacred duty, sacred responsibility. And, and I believe that, that, that parents should have the first, as Melissa said, the, the, the first responsibility to be there for their children. Now, in issues that, that we are aware of, of abuse or, or neglect, then that becomes, that becomes an issue that law enforcement helps us with, that our county helps us with. But, but I, I believe in that sacred duty of parents and, and, and their ability or their, their right to know what, what's going on with their children.
Cassidy?
Sorry. Thank you. Cassidy? So this again, has been said, and I echo this remark, this is not a black and white issue. As a parent myself, I would want to know what's going on with my children. But as a board member, I have seen cases where our students are abused or neglected at home and their safety net is school. School is meant to be a safety net for every single child that walks through that door. And if they are more comfortable using a different name or a different gender at school and that helps them learn, then that's what we need to do. We need to help them learn the best way that we can.
Thank you. Marissa?
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with what has been said. This is not a, always a clear-cut question. But I also, and as a parent, obviously want to know what's going on with my, my children. And I hope that they trust me and feel safe to talk to me as a parent. And I know that that's not true, as, as Cassidy just said, for a lot of students. And so I think that's really important to make sure that school remains a safe place for them to feel like they can be themselves and, which is important for, for learning.
Thank you. Melissa, we'll start with you. Staffing for talented and gifted programs has been cut in the last few years. Are you willing to increase those programs again?
Absolutely. And willing to increase those programs again, depending on what's happening with the rest of the budget and the decisions aren't just made by me. But yeah, the programming is good. We need to be able to support our, our kids that are having challenges as well as support our kids to grow and learn at a faster pace. So I, I believe in those programs. And if, if the budget were to allow and we were able to implement something that we could afford and, and staff that, absolutely, 100%. I would agree that we need to support all of our learners, if they're having challenges as well as if they need to have some availability to be able to grow and expand and learn at a quicker pace or learn more complex than some of their peers may be learning at the time. So, yes.
Thank you, Matt.
4.5% of our children are homeless breaks my heart to, I, I can't imagine sleeping in a car or a tent or at Churches United for the Homeless and, and coming to school. 18% are in special education, 7.7% are, are English learners. We were at Probst Field the other day and, and at Hopkins and a number, a number of our kids are, we're speaking to them with Google Translate. It's a wonderful opportunity for these new students to, to come and, and, and be, be Americans. But boy, it takes a lot of staff and, and we're all committed to, to do what we, what we can with that. But, but again, we're, we're facing, where do we cut? And we're going to be asking you really how to do that. It's a, it's a very difficult question, but we are committed, committed to those children.
Cassidy?
So education has changed, right? Teachers aren't just standing in the front of the class dictating at children anymore. So our district does a nice job of meeting students where they're at. And I will continue to support that absolutely 100%. And I will continue to support education and to meet students at every single level. If that includes gifted and talented, I will continue to support it. But I also don't want to cut any more teachers. And so I will support what has the least amount of cuts for our students so that we can continue to have staff all around throughout the district.
Marissa?
Yeah, I mean, it's been very clear to me in all the conversations I've had over the last few weeks with parents and teachers and even students in many different places in our community that like staffing is important. We need more teachers, I think, in our schools. And so recognizing that there are budget challenges ahead, I think cutting is, is the last thing we, we can put, we need to do. We need to really, if we can and where we can, increase our, our staffing in many of our, in many places in our district.
Azad?
Yes, I would be supportive of that. But most importantly is we need more teachers. We need to give teachers more resources. So if those programs are necessary to be brought back to the system, the educational system, I would be supportive of that. But it's very important to make sure that we have funding for those programs and other programs. But I am really concerned about the special ed resources. We don't have enough resources for that. We need more resources. We need more teachers. We need more, better paid for teachers as well.
Thank you. Matt, we'll start with you. Other than the budget situation, what do you believe is the greatest challenge facing the schools now? And how do you plan to address that?
We are approximately 36% people of color in, in our school district. A wonderful, as Paul said, a wonderful mosaic in our community. What a gift the diversity is. At the same time, our, our entire staff, all 1,700 are 89% light. And, and we are just trying so hard to, to bring teachers in that look like our population. But, but that's been very difficult to do. So we have talked about reaching out to the tribal schools. We've talked about reaching out to the cities. Thank God, we have colleges that, that bring people of diverse backgrounds in, but, but not enough. And I think that's one of the very, that's one of the most pressing problems we have. That along with an 82% graduation rate and an 89% attendance rate. And those are issues.
So we have 40 different languages that are spoken throughout our district. So we need to, biggest problem is communicating with every single family and understanding what is happening in our district. We need translators to help people understand how to get on the bus. We need translators to help people sign up for our forms that we have. We try to make them in as many languages as possible, but that is almost impossible for us to do because we don't have the people to be able to do this. So it's important to find people to help us communicate and help the children grow in those different languages and further their education from there.
Marissa?
Yeah, I think, you know, having a very increasingly diverse population of students in, in our school system is both a challenge and an opportunity. And thinking more about how we are creating an inclusive culture within the schools and how do we support that in many of the ways like Cassidy just said. And I think- that in many of the ways like Cassidy just said. And I think overall, in addition to just the increasing diversity, just the increasing number of students and the fact that Morehead is growing and growing, and one of the fastest growing places outside of the Twin Cities is a challenge to, to our school system in and of itself, particularly as it relates to funding and, and all of, all of the things because more is needed everywhere when that, when that happens.
Azan?
Yes, it's human nature, not only for children, but even for adults. We like to see people like us, to learn from them, to work with them. So that diversity, we know that Morehead is growing and growing fast. So we have to prepare for it, not to wait until we have to change things. We have to be active before we have to do that. So, communicating with colleges, helping, communicating with the different communities here, asking colleges to prepare teachers for us so they could do a better job feeding this diversity to be a resource, not, not a challenge. Thank you.
Melissa?
Can you please repeat the question?
Yes. Other than the budget situation, what do you believe is the greatest challenge facing the schools and how will you address it?
So, one of the biggest challenges that I can see is hiring teachers and hiring staff to work in our buildings. And there is a teacher shortage. I think everybody is aware of that. It's very difficult to hire a new teacher. It's staffing all around in different positions has been, been very challenging all the way around. If you work in a, in a director or a manager, you know it's really hard to hire people. But hiring teachers is one of the biggest challenges that I can see. I could think one of, one of, something that I would work on and has been worked on to be able to solve that issue is build your own programs, pairing up with your community, your universities, supporting children if they're interested in the teaching career to, to go to school, become a teacher, stay in Morehead. And I think that's something that we need to look at is, is, is why? Why don't people, why don't kids, why don't students want to be teachers and, and try to promote the teaching field and hire more teachers? So.
Thank you. Cassidy? I believe this will be our last question and we'll start with you. A lot of parents find the non-school days and summer and things like that to be challenging schedule-wise. What do you, what can be done to make the school schedule more family-friendly? Things like late starts, things like that.
Late starts are imperative for teachers to have some PLC time. That wasn't a choice that any of us came by lightly. That was a choice that needed to be done because those teachers needed that time to work together and collaborate and plan for our students. And I think the best way to combat that at this point is the communication that goes out to our families to let them know our district offers daycare, I believe it's through the Y at the elementary schools for those late start days. There's lots of different opportunities that family have in the district that they can take a part of. And it's our job to communicate that we are going to put our teachers, put our teachers' needs out and we're going to help them with their PLCs.
Marissa?
I, I 100% agree that the late start days, the scheduled days off are really important to protect for our teachers and that time for planning and collaboration. And I also understand as, as parents, you know, that they are challenging. And I'm really terrible every year about putting them on my calendar at the beginning of the year. So I'm like, ooh, late start tomorrow. Now what? There are, there are after-school care programs or before school, school care programs as well in the schools. But it is something to think about, like, and, and talk to our legislators about, like, are there ways that we can, just as we fund free lunch, are there ways that on those particular days, we could provide, you know, free in-school care, whether it's before school or during those days? Are there ways that we can do that to provide it for families who really rely on that in terms of, and don't have the flexibility in their work schedules to be able to adjust? So, thinking creatively about solutions. But I agree that that time is really important to protect for teachers.
Thank you. Azan?
Yeah, it's a delicate balance. Late start is needed for teachers to prepare. We need to give them more time so they can do a better job educating our kids. But we need more programs to, like daycare and after-business hours because a lot of people, it, it's impacting our creative force because a lot of people can, they have to go to work and they have to be back at a certain time, not whenever school is done. So, those programs are really needed and it's a challenge for a lot of families to deal with this late start and early coming home when, when people are at work. So, more programs are needed, more discussion, communication between parents and school system, the board, to see what is the best way to serve the biggest majority of people with that area.
Melissa?
So, I remember those days. My son just graduated from Morehead High School. So, he's a Concordia student. So I don't have to worry much about him as a parent. And my daughter's in eighth grade. So if there's a late start, you know, for, in our family, I don't have to worry. But I remember those days. It was very challenging. The schedule in general is tough for parents, no matter what you're doing. So, I guess what I want to say is I, I've seen some progress on different things that are being implemented. And something really exciting that I just learned about is at Horizon Middle School, what they're doing for their students. And they're offering all kinds of programs for after-school for those students. They're sending them out. They're promoting those to the families. They're offering busing for those kids to participate. That keeps our kids active. It keeps them involved in different things, theater, sports, and, and they're offering transportation. That's all being offered through the district. And I'm so excited and happy that's happening. So, that is one thing that's already happening. And I just wanted to share it because I'm super excited about it.
Matt?
Melissa, I went to Concordia and you might have to worry just a little bit. Claire Peterson, one of the finest teachers Morehead ever had, recently passed away. He was my typing teacher. And as many of you who were old enough to type in class maybe remember, now is the time for all good people to come to the aid of their country. And now is the time for all citizens of faith communities to come to the aid of their community, of their school system. There was a time when, when kindergartens were in the churches in Morehead with, with certified teachers, but in the churches. And those of us, my whole career was in a faith community with two or three staff members. We relied totally on volunteers. Where are the volunteers? Where are the volunteers? There's at least part of the answer there. So I call on faith community. I call on people that maybe are wondering what, you know, maybe that are bored. Step up, help in any way that you can. A neighbor, neighborhoods.
All right. This is the end of our question-answer session. I want to take this opportunity to, again, thank you to our candidates for participating in this forum and also participating in democracy. We need folks like you to make it work. Another reminder, use vote411.org to help you get your information about voting. Remember, Election Day is November 5th very soon, just a couple weeks here. You can use vote411.org to make sure you have everything you need to go to the polls and know what's going to be there. We'll begin with closing remarks and we'll start with Marissa, just so I don't lose track. Go ahead.
All right. Well, I just want to thank the League of Women Voters again for hosting the forum. I really appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts and answer questions. I would say that, you know, I see a school board member's job as basically making decisions that serve the best interests of all our students and staff and teachers. You know, I'm pretty upfront that I don't have all the answers, like, you know, and I, as I don't think anybody has all the answers all the time, right? But I'm trained in science and what I do know how to do is how to ask questions. I know how to gather evidence. I know how to seek input. I know how to listen to people and feedback and really pay attention, close attention to details. And so I would just say, you know, if elected, I would use those skills to hopefully make informed decisions and actively engage in issues that are important to making our schools a safe and supportive place for all of our students. So, education has always been really important to me and my family and I would be honored to serve. So I humbly ask for your vote on November 5th.
Azan?
Thank you so much for hosting the event. I lived in different cultures and I taught at Defense Language Institute in Monterey, California, and I'm certified instructor by that institute. I taught Introduction to Sociology at NDSU when I was working on my doctoral degree. And I received Excellence in Teaching Award from Sociology Department at NDSU. I'm a great listener. I'm a great observer. If I'm elected, I will listen to teachers, listen to their concerns and try to address those issues. I'm a multicultural student. I'm multicultural and multilingual sociologist. I will try to bring different views and discussions to the board. I support to pay teachers, greater pay to teachers and provide greater resources to them, especially, special aid, special education teachers. I support a safe environment in which every child would learn better. I'm endorsed by the Teachers Union. I am humbly asking for your votes. Thank you.
Melissa?
I just want to thank, again, the League of Women Voters to allow us to participate in this forum and to educate the voters on information that we've shared today about ourselves as well as answers to questions that were difficult to be put on the spot to answer sometimes and not have a lot of thought about it before you say something. However, I'm going to take a different approach to this and I'm going to say some of my favorite things about being on the school board. One of my very favorite things about being on the school board is we get to graduate our students. And so I just, I didn't write this in any of the papers that I wrote to be able to give information out to the community, but that is one of my favorite moments, is when those, those students walk through and I hand their diploma or shake their hand or help them down the stairs. That is one of my favorite moments. Being on the school board is not easy. I think it's, once you're on there, you're going to understand if it's somebody else that gets the seat, that it's, it's not an easy job. During COVID, it was really hard. It was hard to go to the meeting sometimes. It was that hard. But we made it through. And so that's some of my favorite moments, is seeing those kids, see them graduate and to be able to shake their hand in hand their diplomas. And that's what we're here for and that's what this is all about. So, thank you.
Matt?
I had the honor of writing the introduction to the Morehead High School history book, which was recently published by extraordinary Brian Cole. Let me read how I ended it. "Over 150 years ago, our community embraced the words of Oliver Wendell Holmes, 'A child's education should begin at least 100 years before they are born.' History reminds us that it's often children who lead us in times of change. As we look forward to the next 150 years and beyond, let us look to and learn from our children and allow them to lead us by their inclusive examples." Poet Amanda Gorman wrote, "Every day we write the future. Together we sign it. Together we declare it. We share it. For the truth marches on inside of each of us." Morehead Public Schools is always striving to do whatever it takes to build our young people to boldly step into an uncertain future. It's what we've always been. It is who we are. And thank you for being part of it. And thank you for these forums, for the hard work that you do on behalf of all the citizenry. Bless you."
Cassidy?
Matt, I love you, but you are really hard to follow. Over the years, I've not only had, I've held various community, or committees throughout the board. I have been on, I've been a treasurer. I've been a vice chair. I've been a chair. I've proven my dedication to seeing our students succeed as a member. And I've had the privilege, excuse me, and I've consistently worked to ensure fair raises for teachers and staff through negotiation committees. I've also advocated for honest and open communication. And to the core of my vision is creating an inclusive environment for all of our students so that every student can succeed and feel safe. We work hard every day and I am just so grateful to be part of this awesome community and this board. And grateful for all of you for asking questions and keeping us on our toes. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much to all these candidates. Thank you to the audience for being active participants. Thank you to the other volunteers here today. There's some helpful pieces of literature on the table over there, a voting checklist. And I hope everyone has a great night. Be well and be safe as you get home.
Thanks, Jack. Miss John.